Good evening, welcome to the Wade Park Planning Commission meeting, Tuesday, July 13th. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Roll call, we're all present. Is there any changes for the agenda? Oh, sorry.
I move we approve the agenda.
A second.
We've got a motion to approve and a second for approve the agenda, all in favor, saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, pass all with all. October 13th, 2020, minutes.
After my review, I'd make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
We've got a motion to approve in a second, all in favor, saying aye.
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 March 9th, 2021, minutes. Any changes?
Do we skip February? Just do February.
Sorry about that, February 9th, 2021.
Mr. President, I would move for approval of those minutes.
I'll second that motion.
We've got approval in a second, all in favor, saying aye.
Aye.
Passed with all present. March 9th, 2021, minutes.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
We've got a motion to approve in a second, all in favor, saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same sign, passed with all present. Item number seven, interim use permit. Wade Park Plan Commission hold a public meeting at City Hall, 19 13th Avenue North, 6:30 or soon thereafter, Tuesday, July 13th, 2021, to hear the following request. Request of Sandra Feder Living Trust and Johnson Materials, Inc., for an interim use permit to extract, use, and mine to remove granite in an Aiguan agricultural rural district at the property address as 2337 Granite View Road. Public meeting opened at 6:33.
Chair Jansky, folks in attendance, anyone watching at home? Bear with me, please, I've got a little bit of a cough, so I apologize for that. This is a general location map of the property, I think most in attendance are familiar with it. For anyone not, it's just to the southwest of the roundabout on Granite View Road. This request is at the behest of the current ownership and Johnson Materials, Inc., who also operates the current granite quarrying operation located not too far nearby to the north on another property. The request is for a 10-year mining project on this property, address is 2337 Granite View Road. The applicants have been courting with city staff since earlier this year when they approached the city regarding the feasibility and viability of the project. As I mentioned, this is the same outfit that runs the current quarrying operation that was approved in late 2018 for a five-year interim use permit for that property with the granite coming out of there largely dedicated to the I-94 reconstruction project. The total of the proposed areas for quarrying associated with this property is 22.1 acres, which are estimated to contain an estimated 2.6 million cubic yards of granite and approximately 450,000 cubic yards of overburden. The quarrying plan, which I'll move into here. Quarrying plan divides the site into four phases over the lifespan of the 10-year permit. The sites are denoted on here, kind of phase one and then working outwards. The intent of the applicant pending a potential approval would be to begin work later this summer or fall with the first phase of approximately 5.3 acres. If approved, my recommendation would be that the interim use permit be limited to that 10-year span, which is also the request of the applicant, which could be extended with additional review and approval if needed after that time, assuming compliance with conditions of approval and that there's no unaddressed or unresolved issues or concerns. A copy of the narrative and information submitted by the applicants was enclosed with the packets for your review. The intent is for daytime operations only, 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, with processing operations onsite, which would include a mobile office, excavator, fire loader, drill, crusher, and wash plant. That's a little different than the other operation they have nearby in that they don't do any onsite processing with those. That's basically carried offsite. There is some existing tree barrier on the property to assist in noise attenuation, along with the denoted berming. The proposed circulation plan has been reviewed by the city engineer and public works director, and they're comfortable with the proposed routes, trucks up and out of there and back in. Truck traffic very, very roughly would be expected to be about 36 trucks daily during mining operations, quarrying operations. There would be dust control performed onsite as well, primarily through watering and some grades to control anything coming on the road. The currently proposed reclamation and end-use plan would be to maintain the area as a natural quarry pond at the owner's request. Basically allow it to fill with water and provide a seating condition of the property for some potential future use that may be determined at a later time. After review by city department heads during our standard planning meetings, staff forwarded the submitted application materials for review by our city consultant that works with us on mining and any sort of blasting operations that are done with Martin Marietta, as well as the existing interim use permit for Johnson Materials. I've not received any, excuse me, any word yet back from them, but their request is largely similar in nature to the other proposed use, which the consultant didn't have any major issue with and had recommended just some standardized conditions of approval, which would be incorporated here for recommendation. One comment that was received by staff regarding the future anticipated street right-of-way on to the north of the property is denoted on being kind of largely on the adjacent property. If you can see it where my mouse is here, that is the property to the north, I believe it's Mick property, with some of the right-of-way, anticipated future right-of-way being on the Feador property. When that came up, we did take a close look at it with the city engineer. He noted that it appears to be fairly appropriate, but recommended that we forward the info to the county engineer for consideration. We did hear back from Jody Tyke at Stearns County. Their main comment was that the, it's kind of to be determined yet, but they would expect that there would be more right-of-way located on the Feador property as well, that it would be more evenly split perhaps. They don't know at this time, but they did expect that a more equitable split between the properties. So that could potentially impact the berming or potentially phase four on that stretch. That would be a ways out, and it's possible that if it's a 10-year life cycle, it's quite possible that the operation could be wrapped up by then. But if it's left at a state where some right-of-way is needed, that's something that needs to be accounted for. Because we don't know at this time what that might look like, I've included as a condition that's been added since the packet went out, that it's basically subject to whatever the county may opt to do with the future right-of-way on that stretch and the possible future southwest belt line. Nothing set in stone for that, but just to put it on the radar that it could potentially be an issue at some point. Given the large parcels in the subject area, there's a relatively small number of parcels located immediately adjacent. I would expect that typically with quarrying operations, we do get questions, and I would assume a lot of the folks here for that with those questions tonight. A performance bond in the amount of $100,000 is recommended by staff, as there's little work to be performed by the applicant as part of the reclamation due to the desire to keep it as a pond. This is a lesser amount than the bonds associated with the previous interim use permit request where there was more backfilling and work to be done. But I would believe it's in line with the project and similar to the other recent examples for projects that were submitted by the applicant for review and consideration other area communities. I would recommend setting at $100,000, but I would not be surprised if the council opts to up that either because they've traditionally requested a substantial bond amount to basically guarantee work is done to satisfaction. I've not had any major issues with the applicant's existing operations to the north and questions that did arise at one point were resolved quickly with their cooperation and provision of the blasting data records that were required as part of that associated interim use permit with that project. So that's why we incorporate those conditions, so if something does come up or there's ever a question, we can go back and look at the actual numbers and data and see if there's anything out of line. At this time, I'd recommend approval of the interim use permit as proposed with the following conditions, and these are lengthy, so I'll go through them. I believe that there's 22 at this point. Number one, proposed use is subject to all provisions of city ordinance section 52, mining and extractive uses. Number two, interim use permit for mining shall terminate September 1st, 2031. All mining activity must cease at that time. Reclamation activities shall be complete by September 1st, 2032. Renewal may occur subject to processes established by city ordinance section 52. No task or inferred approval renewal is established by granting of additional conditional use permit. Number three, and I would note this is the one that's been added since discussion with the city engineer or communication with them, or county engineer, excuse me. Property is subject to potential future required right-of-way dedication as determined by Stearns County. Likely increased width from those depicted on submitted phase plans are most likely potentially impacting proposed phases three and four. Number four, hours of operation are limited Monday to Friday, 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Number five, no explosives shall be stored onsite. Number six, berming of a sufficient height to shield view of operations from adjacent properties and roadways shall be established immediately upon project commencement and be in place by July 1st, 2022. Number seven, applicant shall be responsible for any repair costs associated with any verified settlement or damage to adjacent paved streets or roadways due to blasting and permitted by city staff or city consultants. Number eight, a pit development plan shall be submitted for review and approval. Proposed number and location of blasts and depth of blasting. Number nine, applicant and/or blasting contractor shall maintain minimum of three seismic air pressure monitoring stations surrounding site to document blast impact. Particle velocities of no more than .25 inches per second and 134 decibels as measured on an adjacent property shall be maintained. Number 10, a proposed annual estimated blasting schedule shall be submitted to City of Wade Park annually by March 1st. Number 11, applicant shall maintain records of each blasting event for later inspection if required. Records shall include date, location onsite, blast seismic data, number of holes, depth of holes, and pounds of explosive per hole. Number 12, applicant bears responsibility for any damages and/or injuries associated with any fly rock leaving property limits resulting from blasting events. Number 13, mined areas shall adhere to those as identified by the submitted plans. Number 14, a stormwater pollution prevention plan shall be submitted for review and approval and adhered to accordingly. Wash racks and grates shall be implanted onsite for all ingress egress points as part of the stormwater pollution prevention plan to limit tracking of debris off property. Number 15, traffic circulation plan shall adhere to those reviewed and approved and submitted by applicant unless otherwise agreed to by city staff. Number 16, any debris tracked off property and into public right-of-way shall be removed by this applicant immediately upon notice. Number 17, applicant is responsible for securing any additional city, county, or state permitting requirements, including but not limited to requirements for environmental assessment worksheet, DNR, dewatering permitting, and blasting licensing or activity requirements. Number 18, applicant agrees that City of Wade Park staff shall be allowed access to the site as required per ordinance and outline in submitted project narrative. Number 19, any backfilling of site associated with reclamation shall be completed using only clean, compatible fill free of debris or contamination. No construction debris, petroleum, chemically impacted soils, demolition, debris, or waste, paving materials, or other materials shall be used for reclamation or backfilling. Number 20, applicant shall maintain and provide record to city on dates, volumes, and sources of any fill brought into site for reclamation. Number 21, a performance bond shall be required in the amount of $100,000 to ensure reclamation. Bond shall be submitted prior to commencement of any activity. And lastly, number 22, failure to abide by any terms or conditions is set forth in interim use permit and/or applicable city ordinance or state of Minnesota law or statute shall be grounds for revocation of interim use permit. Those being the conditions of approval, and I would add that we don't expect that the conditions regarding reclamation would really be utilized because again, the intent is to keep it as a pond, but put it in there just basically just in case things should change or doesn't need to be brought in for any reason. Those are the recommended conditions with those in mind, I would recommend approval of the request with those conditions.
Thanks, John. Commissioners, have any questions for John at this time? Okay, this is a public hearing, public's welcome to put their input in. If you come up to the podium, state your name and address and your concerns or against.
I would add that I believe the applicants are here tonight as well, since quarrying and mining is not my expertise. I'm processing the requests through the city, but for any technical questions, I would likely defer to the applicants for their response if they could.
My name is Terry Mick. I have the adjoining property to the north. I just have a couple concerns, questions, more than anything. I have a 33-foot well, and I'm on solid rock, and I got a good well. I'm concerned, a little concerned to the point, I believe if I remember what I read, they're talking about a 150-foot hole, and I'm not sure that it will affect my well. It won't, that's one of my concerns. Second concern is the road right-of-way, I mean, it's not a right-of-way, it's just a proposed thing from Sam DeLeo. And that, that I would be opposed to. I mean, if it's half on my property, I can live with that. I'd just as soon not see it, but roads will happen. But in going a little further with that, both from a meeting quite a few years back, Jody from the county had indicated that the road probably would go more south. In fact, at that point, she was saying it would end up mostly on Ralph's because of the park. And it depends upon how the park purchased the property or where they got their grant money and different things. They may not be able to allow a road. I don't know about that, I'm just bringing it up. But I would like to see the road at least half, half and half. Little bit of a concern as far as my part.
And Mr. Mick, if you're okay with it, I could read the response we received from Jody Tyke on this. This was just yesterday. Since he had stopped in, we decided to contact the county engineer's office on this, and then also sent it to the APO because they're kind of leading the charge on that southwest belt line study. Just more put it on their radar too. Excuse my voice, it's starting to go a little bit. She says, "John, thanks for the opportunity to comment on the Feador Johnson Materials, Inc. interim use permit request. My only comment slash concern on the proposed operations plan is that they are assuming the vast majority of future right-of-way for an extension of county-stated Highway 84, Granite View Road, westerly of the Trunk Highway 15 interchange." That's roundabout, would be on the Mick property to the north. As you're aware, we're starting to once again look at a beltway alignment. We would need to fully avoid the scientific and natural areas of Quarry Park with any right-of-way or future roadway. And we'd also want to avoid the tower and guide wires on the TJ Communications property. I realize that the northerly portion of the proposed operations plan is mostly phases three and four, but I think it's a safe assumption that we would potentially need more right-of-way, at least half, from the Feador property. Let me know if you have any questions on my comments, thanks for the opportunity. So she's pretty much echoing what it sounds like you were told in the past that I don't know if it would be more on one side or the other, but she thinks it would probably be shifted at least down, at least more evenly between your two properties than the plan we have here shows. Unfortunately, it's so far out that we just don't know.
No, I understand that. You know, with the TJ properties where the tower is, I know it would have to shift strictly. The guy wire is quite close to the property line. My last concern, and that's just, I questioned how would it affect me as far as selling my property?
Yeah, and unfortunately, I don't have a good answer for you. If I did, I'd be happy to share it, I don't think anyone does at this point.
I wish I had a
It's more that it has to be accounted for, I think it's more that, rather than specifically your property, I think it's more of an at-your-risk thing with the Feadors and applicants that this may very well change their plans from on that north side. It may not, maybe it's a minor change, maybe it's more significant than they think, but until that future date draws closer, you know, that would be something that if this goes forward, everybody would have to be in communication on and go working on that. That's, it's always a hard thing with these long-range projects because they're so far out that we don't want to necessarily hold things up, but we don't know what's going to happen. We run on the other side of town too, it's a, you know, we're looking at plonky things right in the middle of what could be a a future road connection and anywhere from 15 to 40 years. But, you know, you can't hold that up either, you know, you try to account for a couple opportunities to work around it, but it's long-range planning for you. As far as the, your well question, and I might defer to the applicants on this. I recall this came up too with when we looked at a gravel pit not too long ago, about a year or so back on County Road 138. I think that there's a state statute that's in law that provides some level of guarantee or recourse for a private property that's impacted by a neighboring mining or quarrying operation. I was trying to look into that, I wasn't able to locate it in time for this meeting unfortunately, but I remember it came up as a point of discussion when we looked at that gravel pit last year. I don't know if they happened, Alex or Jeff, if you happen to know that offhand, maybe it gets outside your area too. It was pretty contentious at that meeting with that gravel pit. That was a longer-term item too, that was a 30-year, 40-year permit or something. I'll have to keep digging into that and see, but if there's some protection for that, you know, we would defer to that. I might be able, if this goes forward, I might have a better, I tried to have a better handle on it before it would go to the city council. It'd probably add in a condition on that too. I just can't right now because I just don't have that in front of me. Yeah.
That's all I had. Thank you.
My name is Margie Hartnik, and I have seven acres, it's abutting Highway 15, which I bought back from the county. Anyway, my question is, that law you were talking about, are you going to be having another meeting so we can find out some more about that? Because I would like to know if it's going to affect my property over there too.
The what, I'm sorry?
The law you were just talking about that you think there is?
The statute.
Statue? You just talked about it.
The road right-of-way, where it's going to
Oh, that, at some point, yes, there would be some, you know, there would be meetings on that in the future. It's a very, and I have to apologize, this isn't the area I typically delve in. This is more in the auspice of the city engineer and the county. But with, right now, they're just starting the process of looking at the southwest belt line. It's been kind of hanging around the edges for years and years, but they're just starting, it's about a nine or 10-month process, from what I understand, of reviewing kind of options for that. So is that, right now, they've just been meeting with cities and city staff and elected officials on possible future routes or connections for the southwest belt line, which is kind of the working name. We expect that as that wears on into next year, there would be more, more public input options or some more public meetings regarding that.
But it's, you said there is a law on the books that protects people with land abutting where they're going to be working.
For a well, do you mean?
Damage to the well.
There's, from what I understand, there's a state statute that pertains to if a well is found to be negatively impacted or dries up due to mining or quarrying or extracting something from the ground on a neighboring property. That's, I've been trying to look into it, but unfortunately, I wasn't able to find it before today. That's what we were told in a previous meeting on a different request, is that there is something in law that covers that, that puts the, if it's able to be pinned back to the mine or quarry, that it's a responsibility of that operator or owner to find a solution.
But our insurance would cover that, but I can get that confirmed before the city council meeting.
So we'll be having another meeting before September?
This would be going to the city council on Monday, we'd expect, if it moves forward tonight. So we would try to have an answer before that meeting so we can share it with the city council.
And then will, do they send us out letters then too?
No, there's typically no further communication after an approval. As far as, we don't send out letters to the neighbors that say it's been approved, you know, we, that's the purpose of these meetings. We trust that people
Yeah, but this meeting, we don't know.
Well, if you want to give your contact information to Alex, we can check what
Yeah, we could certainly follow up with you privately, but we don't, we don't make a point of sending out information after every meeting to, you know, to everybody that's in attendance.
And what about zoning? With them being able to do this kind of work, is the zoning going to be changed? From residential and agricultural and rural?
It's considered an interim use permit. It, it's considered an interim use permit in the agro-residential district. It's we see periodic requests. You know, this is a little bit longer one. The last one was five years. It's, they could, they're only allowed with a timeframe in mind and only with conditions of approval, but it is, it is an ordinance that they're potentially allowable use.
And then what is the difference between no explosives on site, but you can blast?
They have a blasting contractor that comes in and does the work. They, Johnson Materials doesn't do their own blasting. They have a contractor that's.
Will be explosives on site though, for the blasting?
I'm sorry?
Will there be explosives though on site?
When they're, when they're actively blasting, yes. The condition means that they're not being stored and left unattended, basically, where they could be potentially burglarized or, or they, they come in, they do the explosives and then they leave with the explosives. They're not kept on a, in a lockbox or anything on site like that.
So then the FEDORS wanted to keep it as like a quarry?
Yep, it would, it would be, it would be a big quarry pond at the end. That's what their current desire is.
Years down the road.
Yes.
And the hundred thousand that's quoted, you think that's going to cover all that acreage to replace all the gravel and dirt and everything?
The performance bond is usually to, that it could be, the intent is that if they walk away from it for a reason, if the company goes bankrupt or they dissolve, any number of things that, that happen over time. Not that we expect that to. It's that the city could basically undertake the work and do it ourselves. We request a higher bond amount when there's more work to be done, like with the property on the other nearby MTL partners. That bond amount was higher because there's more backfilling needs to be brought in. There's a lot more grading, there's a lot more work. Basically, in this case, they pull it out and they leave it. You know, it would cost them more money to bring it, bring material back in to fill it. So I, you know, at least I'm comfortable with that, with that hundred thousand dollar amount. It's more of a, of insurance, so to speak. I don't think that.
If it's ten years down the road, that's going to be, I don't know. It doesn't sound like a lot to do all that area, but my other question is too, is there a risk for pollution deep down if they're digging a hundred, a hundred fifty-foot hole? Will that affect the water shelves down lower that sit on granite?
I can't speak to that at all. That's, that's a geological question. I don't have the breadth of experience or specialty to answer on that. I don't know the applicants.
What about in other areas where you guys have done this too? Has it polluted any of the? Um, I guess that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ralph FEDOR, two-three-three-seven Granite View Road, and I guess I'm kind of the subject of conversation here. Two things. First of all, the road. Terry, you and I, I think are in agreement with the way it was laid out or the discussions that were in the past. So I, I don't dispute anything you say about that. And regarding the water, I can share a little information with you. When we purchased the property, water was a concern. You know, can we get water? So I engaged Brown Engineering to come out to the property and they drilled or bored sixteen holes over the, pretty much the span of the property. The deepest that we got before hitting granite was thirty feet. And on all of the holes, we did not encounter any aquifer. There's no flow of water or aquifer, so there's no evidence of a shared aquifer with other areas because there appears to be no existing aquifer from Brown's data. That is basically the only, the comments I have to try and address some of the issues that were brought up here tonight. And, and the water and the wells, you know, that, those are questions that should be answered. And I think we do have a little data here that will help at least reassure us about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Brian Livis Meyer, seventeen oh three Granite View Road. I'm just north of this project, adjacent to the other mine. I just had a few questions and you answered the beltway one. With this being mined, not against it or for it, I'm just looking at my mother and dad's property, which I built on. And roughly with my property and my parents, it's a hundred and thirty-five acres. What if other people wanted to mine? What are your thoughts on, my well is three hundred and ninety-six feet deep, six feet of dirt, three ninety solid granite. My neighbor, Emil Tabit, who is adjacent to the other mining, his is four hundred and twenty feet deep, solid rock. With development in a project like this, is it going to be okay to mine our farm or my twenty-four acres? Well, Emil, Emil has thirty acres. Will he be able to mine his? I guess are my questions.
Because of the, the interest, the increased interest that's happened somewhat rapidly in the past couple of years, I have a request in to the city council for our work session on Monday to discuss with them whether we need to look at potentially a moratorium on any additional mining requests for the time being to see if we want to continue to allow additional mines or only within certain circumstances where there's anticipated redevelopment. Those sorts of things because we've gotten a couple of requests over the past couple of years after going many years without any. So I think it's something that, you know, we at least need to discuss and see if we want to look at doing that. So right now, I can't say that it would or wouldn't be allowed because it's something that I'm proposing to the city council that we may need to put a pause on to see if we need to revisit our ordinance and perhaps put a limit on, on them or you know, maybe only in certain, certain circumstances or potentially not at all. I, I worry that we'll be get too many requests, especially especially in a certain area, then it takes potentially all their uses out of, out of consideration. So that's, I'm just being forthright. That's what, that's what's on the table right now. We may not get traction. They may be happy to leave it the way it is and, and say, no, if we get requests, we'll, we'll process them just like we have been. So I, I don't know what the future holds right now. But as, as of right now, as I, as I mentioned with the previous person speaking, they are considered interim use, so we do process them through this, through this process where they go through the city council and that's in any agro-residential areas of right now.
Well, and there's outcroppings. That's kind of the problem in the whole area. There's outcroppings. Do you mine down ten feet and fill it in and you can make it residential or developable?
That's part of the question. That's where we need to see, you know, if it's something like a gravel pit, like I one thirty-eight where it's meant to be, that's, that's what that property will be for a generation. That's one kind of animal, but then you have something like is going on adjacent to you or the intent is to use, use it for five years, pull the gravel or granite out and end with something that's, you know, hopefully a little more readily buildable. That's, that's entirely different animal. You know, so we, we may be willing to, if, if we look at any of those things, that's a consideration. Do we only allow it in certain circumstances or certain areas? Right now, I don't have anything.
Well, and the burden on developing the farm is just the rock itself, which is on the owner. So then you deal with that too. I mean, you might have somebody that buys it or you, we have outcroppings. We can get stuck in certain spots of the farm. The rock is right there. My parents' steps is on rock, on the home farm. So there's, is it better off being mined or is it mined down ten feet is my question. It's just something to think about.
Yeah, and then that's, that's what, you know, I'm, I'm thinking, thinking of and bringing this up is that you know, if there's all these outcroppings or we run into, say some information comes up because a private landowner on the other side of town, say on one thirty-seven, digs down and sees, sees that they're sitting on a ton of granite, they can make money by pulling it out. Do we want to become a community that's got, you know, three, four, five or more quarrying operations going on potentially at once in our rural areas? If that, if that's the desire that everyone's comfortable with that, you know, that's potentially fine. But I, I think we need to take a look at that. I don't, I don't think we maybe anticipated seeing, you know, the interest that we, we've had.
Well, that all falls on profitability and what you can do with your parcel. It wasn't a great farm, as Mr. Zabinski knows. It's, all the corn's just burning up and it, it's, it's hard to farm it. There's all kinds of rock. It's great, but I guess that was my question where it really goes and what makes sense to do with it, because if it's a burden on us as far as property owners, it's going to be interesting. But I'm not for or against it. I just thought, you know, is Emil, Emil owns thirty acres. Is he going to want to mine? Is Terry? Well, maybe Terry can't because of the beltway, but you know, there's issues in that area and it's all rock. So, you know.
Yeah, and it, it may be that, you know, quarrying operations are maybe they are the, what we refer to as the highest and best use for those properties. At least to pull out what you can and make some economic sense for them. That's possible, but it's something I'm asking the council to, to give me the ability to put a pause on, on any new applications and take a little closer look at for a while.
On a hundred and fifty feet, that's pretty deep. I don't know how deep Meridian is, but the regular quarries that are in Quarry Park, I don't know if there's one that's a hundred and fifty feet deep, but it's possible. Well, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Anybody else like to make a comment?
My name is Raquel Hartneck. We live right along fifteen Granite View Road, two-four-six-one-seven, or right adjacent to it, the phase one. So, previous meeting that you guys have talked about possible city sewer and water coming out there. Is that an option that's going to happen, you know, faster in the future with all this development happening?
Hard to say. We don't have any near-term plans to bring anything out there. We wouldn't push anything out there just for the sake of putting it out there. It would be, it would have to be led by, by an applicant or a development. You know, if someone wanted to you know, do a large-scale development and they wanted to, to finance bringing those out there, we would bring it as far as that development. You know, it's with all the, the rock in there, it's cost prohibitive to do that. We do see it potentially being more likely, you know, once their operation on the MTL partners' property wraps up and then maybe with Mr. Livis Meyer's property as well, you know, that we've, we've had discussions internally on those things. But there's no easy answer because we have properties that are separated, you know, maybe more ready than others, but there's properties that haven't had anything done to extract granite out of there, but it's, it's still a lot of unknowns in moving anything through.
Right.
And it would be development-led. If someone, if someone came with, you know, bags of money and said, I want to put a development here. I don't care what it costs. We would, we would work with them to get utilities down there. But as far as your property, I don't, I don't see that happening in the near future.
So basically, if like, let's say, if only if a developmental, you know, like the land gets sold, you know, from Way Park towards our house or our farm now. But if you guys grant permits for mining, I mean, it'll probably never be there then. Is that what you're kind of saying too?
I'm sorry?
Because it has to be a development that finances all this.
Mining won't trigger a requirement for services. If it's, if the intent was, for this project was instead of a open, a quarry pod, if the intent was they're going to backfill it and make it into residential lots, and they wanted city services, that's something that could be, that, that would be a different story, but we're not going to run utilities there just because it's a pod.
And I'd like to reiterate one thing that was said too, like about the zoning. With thirty-five, thirty-six trucks coming daily, that wouldn't be considered a heavy industrial area? Especially with explosives going on? It's just going to continue to be residential rural?
I'm not aware that there's a, it, it's, the zoning doesn't change with this.
Okay.
There's, I don't know, there's a standard for what constitutes industrial trucking versus or industrial traffic versus residential. Obviously, it's more trucks that would be out there now. But the, the zoning, underlying zoning doesn't change. The industrial zoning doesn't accommodate, you know, quarries because it's quarries take up a lot of land area and they're, they're set in our ordinance as being in this zoning district, which also allows for farms and nurseries and, you know, kettles and, you know, various other things that are kind of in that same semi-rural nature.
And then when is this predicted to start, if it was okayed?
If it was approved, the, the intent of the applicant, as of right now, would be to start later this summer or this fall.
Okay.
August, September potentially is what, what their application stated.
Thank you.
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
A motion of second to close the public hearing. Allen Favors, anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Public hearing closed at seven fifteen. Commissioners, got any thing you want to bring up, discuss?
Make a motion to approve the applicant's request with the twenty-two conditions stated.
If I could just make a motion, I do have a couple of questions.
Okay.
And I, I maybe didn't pick it up in here. What is the, the water usage required for this type of operation for the washing and so on? Will you be drilling, I mean, a well specifically for that?
Could you come up to Mike Jeff? Thank you.
Well, we may have to drill a well. We recycle the water for our washing operation. We'll have ponds that we, either we'll be able to get water naturally or we may have to drill a well to keep the pond full, but we wouldn't pump, you know, every day. It's just to maintain the level in the pond. And then we have a sediment pond that we run the water, dirty water into. We clean out that pond and that, stuff that we take out of that is another fill product. And the water just kind of recirculates between the two ponds. It doesn't go anywhere.
Would it be in the intent to transport, I mean, to, to sell the finished product off, to leave on site?
Yes.
Okay. What about the overburden? Will that all be stored?
Yes.
There?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Those are some of the questions I had. I, I do have some concerns about it. I, I guess there's, there's some of the, some of the issues brought up make me wonder if it wouldn't be worth waiting on this and getting, possibly getting some more answers prior to approval. That's, that's my opinion.
Can you, some more answers on, with regard to?
Well, even the, the right-of-way questions and stuff, if we could kind of get a more definitive answer from the county and so on.
That won't happen. The, the answer we have is the answer we have. I mean, unless you, we can build a time machine and zip thirty years in the future, that's, that's as good as we're going to get. And I think we're aware of that and they're aware of that. It's just to be determined.
Do, do we need then to make appropriation on here as a condition that, that enough for half the right-of-way to be preserved on the north side of this property? To allow for that, should it be necessary? I mean, is that, is that our obligation or not?
We set, I, I did modify the condition. It's not in your packet. But I did add the condition number three in, in mind. Property is subject to potential future required right-of-way dedication as determined by Stearns County. Likely increase in width from those depicted on submitted phase plans and most likely potentially impacting proposed phases three and four. And that's, that's just going off of what the, the county engineer stated in her, in her email. To say that it's more. Just saying that it's more, it's more likely that they would take more on the Fedor side than they're showing. And that's not a guarantee either, but it's, it's more likely than what they're showing here.
Yeah, I was just interested in the preservation of that area if, if it's needed.
Yeah, we just, we just don't know what this.
Didn't they actually say at least fifty percent? Was that the phrase used in the, in the point, that at least fifty percent of that road would be on the, on the Fedor side?
But John, there's a, on the map, north of that line, there's a house and it says a five hundred foot buffer. That puts it down across the pop, property line further than the road would go. Puts it down by this first wetlands down here. So that'd be farther than half the road or the whole road.
Isn't that just a reference to like a setback, basically?
Yeah, but for blasting, they had to stay five hundred feet away from the house, I'd assume.
Well, that, that five hundred foot buffer, yes.
That'll put it back across property, property line where the road wouldn't matter.
Well, what I was referring to is the anticipated future right-of-way here that's shown as a hundred and sixty-five feet plus or minus.
Yes, but if you look at where the property line is, even if you drop that all the way down,
Yep.
where that buffer line goes down, you put the whole road to the south of that line, it wouldn't make a difference. Because it goes down so far.
Yeah, and, and that's, if that's the case, then.
The right-of-way would be preserved off of their buffer zone.
Yeah, well, all, all I'm trying to get at is that it's on them to figure out if, if and when it gets that far. And it's entirely likely that, you know, this is all said and done and that area is cleaned up and this is a pond long before it's moved. If it does, I, I just, I just want them, that it has to be accounted for. We, we run into this with anything related to the beltline. We ran into it with the solar sites where we needed to keep an avenue gate open, but we couldn't hold it up because there's no, there's no formal plan for a beltline or, or funding.
Beltline been in process since two thousand and five. I'm and I are both on some of those meetings.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and now the, now the APO and the county are, are.
Kicking in.
Kicking in and, and that's, that's partially at our behest because we have these things happening here that in, in our rural areas that are.
I think either way.
If they, if they go, if they go without any regards to the, to the beltline, if and when it does come, then it's, it's gonna be, the road will look like a go-kart track. You know, if you have to zip around every potential thing that, that goes out there between now and then.
Okay, then the other issue I have is, is there a concern about noise? I mean, uh, trees don't stop noise very well. Is that, is that gonna be an issue or, I mean, where are we gonna get complaints and so on?
Well, I, I can't say we won't get complaints. You know, it's, it's subject to the noise ordinance. I think six AM to six PM is reasonable, you know, as far as noise. We haven't gotten any complaints on noise on the other property, which follows the same hours. I can tell you that.
And that's requiring blasting also?
Yeah, that one, that one has blasting. The blasting isn't, isn't that often. Now, this site is different in that they would be doing, um, you know, uh, crushing and stuff onsite. They'd have more work onsite, but, uh, you know, there is burming and it is, you know, more below grade. So that, that is, that provides some, you know, sound deflection, I guess. But it, I mean, it's probably on par with agricultural activities as far as tractors running or
Okay.
things of that nature. I mean, if, if they wanna weigh in, the applicant's wish to weigh in is, that's certainly fine if they have a better idea of, well, how much noise their, their equipment generates. But, um, I don't have specific info on that.
I guess those are some of my concerns.
Well, typically, we don't produce as much noise as let's say Highway fifteen produces.
Okay. That's good to know because I, I hate to dump something on people and then have them come back and, you know. Okay, I appreciate that.
I think, I think they're, the hours are more reasonable than we've seen with other requests where they kinda go sometimes sunrise to sunset, especially in like summer season. That I can see be more of an issue, but, you know, six AM to six PM consistently, I, I think is fairly reasonable, even if there's some noise associated with it.
And most of the time at the other site, even though we're six AM to six PM, most of the days we're running seven to five. So there are a few days that we go, you know, to six, but I don't think we've ever started at six AM out at the other site, so. And I don't foresee probably doing that at this one either, but there could be an occasion where we would, but not regularly.
Is somewhat of a curve around that property as far as the, the trucks exiting and stuff? Will there be a, an exit that will ensure somewhat of safety? Or, or will the trees be cleared back enough to where there'll be safe exit?
Well, I believe there'll be a safe exit. We'll have a stop sign at the end of the driveway for the trucks and we'll have trucks hauling signs on either side of the entrance.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, Tom.
May I assert your motion?
Okay. Make a motion to approve the, the request of the owner for Sandra Feder Living and Trust Johnson Materials with the twenty-two conditions stated by staff for approval.
I'll second that motion.
We got a motion and a second to approve with conditions. All in favor, singers saying aye?
Aye.
Close, same sign. Passed with all.
We expect that this item will go on the, the city council agenda for next Monday, the nineteenth. There, there is not a public hearing associated with that meeting, but if anyone would like to watch or attend, you're welcome to.
The time of the meeting?
Six thirty.
Six thirty.
Or anything to add or?
Uh, no further business from me tonight.
I move we adjourn. Second.
We got a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, singers saying aye?
Aye.
Close, same sign. Meeting adjourned, seven twenty-seven.